Thursday, December 14th, 2017, Situate Planning Board Hearing. We have an agenda that has been posted. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, first on our agenda tonight, continuation of the public hearing for the Flexible Open Space Definitive Subdivision Plan 90 and Vinyl. And we have representatives here?
Yep.
Okay.
So it's Jeff Delisi from Hornberger Delisi Harris, Bill Campi with us tonight, so I'm pinch hitting. We have Paul Maribito, Greg Tanzi, Greg Tanzi is going to be here shortly, Jeff Dirk from Vanasse Associates who did our traffic review. We're also here with Paul Sheeran and Don Glassby, who are the applicants, so.
Great, welcome.
Thank you. I know the chairman probably has an agenda, there's a lot of items to discuss, but Mr. Dirk is from Andover, and I think it would be great if we could just have him explain when you say.
Sure. Yeah, let's make your ride a little better tonight.
This is like worth hearing it, everybody lives in south of the city, so I will say, if you look at traffic over the course of the week, Thursday is the worst.
Yep. Okay, so we're talking about traffic.
So just to introduce myself to the record, Jeffrey Dirk with Vanasse Associates, and we were retained by the applicant to conduct a review of the site relative to traffic generation. So I think there was some question about how much traffic the project would actually generate, and then we also looked at the site distances that were prepared for the access point of the property itself. So in terms of the traffic numbers, we prepared a letter that has trip generation numbers for the project, and for single-family developments, if you know the number of homes, you can always say it's one trip per home during the peak hours. So this is 16 units during the commuter peak hours, so the highest volume hour in the morning, we expect it's going to generate 16 trips, majority of it will be exiting in the morning, smaller amount coming in. In the evening, the numbers are a little bit higher, it's actually 17 trips, so it's a little bit higher than one per unit. But just in general, that's a good rule of thumb to follow. And then the daily number, it's 194 vehicle trips that's going to be generated over a 24-hour basis. That's two-way traffic, so half entering, half exiting itself. So it's not a large generator of traffic, and I put it in terms of numbers, it's one additional vehicle added to the roadway every three to four minutes during the peak hour. So a three-minute or four-minute time period, if you think about the traffic signal that's out front here, that's going to cycle probably about 10 times, five to six times, something like that, over the course of that four to five, three to four minute period, so you can just think about how it would process traffic. So what that really means is, it doesn't result in an increase, it will not result in an increase in motorist delays or vehicle queuing, because it's so dispersed over the course of the peak hour time period.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Yes.
Did you evaluate it with respect to people coming to school?
Those numbers-
The impacts on the school, on the traffic? Because people are going to try to get out of there while people are trying to all come to school, right?
Right, so if you look at it in the morning as the traffic is exiting, so if we said about 16 trips in the morning, about 80% of that traffic's going to be exiting, so if most of your traffic on the roadways during the school time period, then we're going to have probably of the 16 vehicles, if I said, you know, 80% of it is exiting, you're going to have somewhere around, you know, 10 vehicles adding to that flow of traffic during that time period. But again, that's over the course of the hour, you might have a slug within that hour, like if there's a bunch of people leaving to try to get to school, you might have of the 10 vehicles, let's say, that are leaving, you could have six or so that are going to try to get out in a 15-minute time period. But again, it's not a large number in terms of over the course of the day. So you really wouldn't show it. You'd see the concentration of the driveway, but then as you get away from the driveway, you wouldn't really show any impact. So typically, when we have a small-sized project like this, the focus is really on the internal circulation within the site, making sure that we have good pedestrian circulation, and then looking at the external, and looking at sightlines of the driveway to make sure it's properly located, because again, as you get away from the site, you're really not going to show any impacts on the project. So we focused in on the sightlines, and that's what's been shown on the plan here. The applicant is actually, or the applicant's engineer has plotted the site profile, and he's got it in plan view, so you can see kind of a, looking down on the plan, what the sightlines look like. So this would be from a motorist, especially, the motorist is set back 14 and 1/2 feet into the project site, that's where it's assuming the motorist is actually sitting in the vehicle, which is actually quite far, so it's a conservative measurement, and then the motorist looks to the left or the right, and they're sighting to a 3 and 1/2-foot object, and the thought process behind that is that, that's actually the driver's eye height, so the assumption is that, as you're exiting, your eye is looking at the eye of a motorist who's traveling along An- Vinyl Road, so it's kind of a reciprocal thing, I can see you and you can see me, and that's kind of what the thought process is. So the measurements they're going to take and indicate that their sightline looking in either direction exiting the site is over 300 feet. So just to put that in context, what that would mean is that the 300 feet is appropriate for someone that's driving along An- Vinyl Road, that's going somewhere between 35 and 40 miles an hour approaching the intersection, so that's the appropriate sight distance for this, for the access point of the property. So it means anyone driving 40 miles an hour, let's say, along An- Vinyl Road is appropriate sightlines.
And they should be caught for speeding.
They should be caught.
Yeah, over there. Hey Jeff, is that a, do you know if that's a reduced speed limit area during times that schools in session?
Yeah, I think during that time period, you're going to be at more than 20 mile an hour.
Yep.
So people shouldn't be going anywhere near that, even outside of those time periods.
And that takes into account the new entrance design, the landscaping and everything around it?
It does, there's notes on the plan in terms of making sure that the entrances are limbed up and such in that area there. I typically recommend that if you put in conditions on the project, one of the things that was, now what they've shown us, this is actually the site triangle, but actually what would be a condition is saying, within that site triangle area, no objects shall be placed that would exceed 2 and 1/2 feet in height, and that any snow, wind roads, so basically, snow piles in this area that would inhibit sightlines need to be removed. So that's a typical thing, I can put that in writing if it's helpful, I always recommend that. They're not planning to do anything, they'll place anything in those sightline areas, but it's always good just to have it so that, you know, if something accidentally ends up in there, you always have the ability to go to say, hey, that's out of the condition, and get that stuff out of there. And the same thing with the snow wind roads, I know sometimes, you know, town's not able to always kind of push the snow back as far as you'd like to, especially as the snow kind of the clear lays, so that ensures from the standpoint of these sightlines, that they're always maintained at an appropriate level.
Steve, if you put that up a second. This was submitted by Paul Sheeran, this is the proposed entrance, showing a reconstructed stone wall, a new sidewalk, grass strip, vertical granite curbing in the public way in Vinyl Road, and you can see that the vegetation that he's talking about, that we're showing in the plan, would be replaced by this landscaping and the stone wall and sidewalks.
Are the two trees that are next to the sign, are those new?
Yes.
Those seem like they would affect the sightline, huh?
No, this is in the back of the-
The other side, the other side.
The sign, Paul, next to the sign.
Oh, the sign there?
They're more like big bushes.
Yeah, they're definitely new.
No, the sign would be back, this wall-
And are they in or out of the sightline then? It looks like you're showing them about 10 feet high there.
Oh, these here, you mean?
Yeah.
No, those would be on the sightline. The sightline is, this is the sightline-
So can you show us, no, show us the sightline on the, no, show us on the, on the three-dimensional, where's the sightline on the three-dimensional drawing?
Well, the sightline's, the sightline would be off the pavement, you see the blue line here? This is your sightline, this is the property line of the street.
No, but there's a triangle there, though. But he's, you're saying they're 14 and 1/2 feet back from the intersection, right?
Right, right here.
So the sightline's the back part, right?
Right, this is 14, this is the 40 scale, it's 14 and 1/2 feet back from the edge of the pavement here, which is right here.
Oh, I'm thinking it's the, what's the line before it?
That's a dimension line.
Yeah, this, this is a dimension line showing 301 foot sight distance, this is the point that's 14 and 1/2 feet back from the end of the pavement.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was thinking that's, that other line was it?
The parallel to each other, that's why they showed that.
Yeah.
And we're kind of jumping around a bit, but, and we'll get to this in a bit, but the sidewalk over there, that's an added feature that the applicant has since looked at since the last hearing, is committed to putting in there, and it's a five-foot wide sidewalk with a granite curbing, and those shrubs obviously would be behind and all that, so it should be fine.
Okay. All right, that makes sense. So I'm sorry, what's that other black line then?
So the line on the top here is just the dimensional, and it shows, that's dimensioning the 300 feet along-
Oh, it's a dimension line, I couldn't see that.
Yeah, it's a parallel, that's why it's-
I got you. Okay. Let's see, let's see. So that's all, anything on traffic? Questions? Any follow-up? The only other question I had was on construction traffic, right? Doing the math, it seems like you're going to have like 1,500 to 1,700 trucks for all that fill, and have you sort of addressed traffic for that?
I don't think that we've presented, if you're asking for like a construction plan, like a management plan, I don't, I don't think so, did we do that?
No.
We're happy to provide that.
Well, I was thinking, well, you have your traffic engineer here, given that we're doing that, and we have two peak times of the day down that road, right? We have morning, two school, and the evening, leaving school.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to do.
Would you avoid those time periods with truck traffic, right?
You're going to want to condition that, because we absolutely don't want trucks, any mixing of the truck traffic with pickup and drop-off.
You're okay with that.
We don't want trucks on the road, same time, any children are waiting for the bus or anything like that out there.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I just wanted to get that while I was thinking about it.
That's a good point, Steve, the applicant indicated he would consent to that type of condition.
Yeah, I don't know what the appropriate timeframes would be, but we should figure that out, right?
Sometimes you usually have it so that they have to figure out on a yearly basis, so they have to check in with the superintendent of school every year to determine what that hour is.
Well, my question would be, is this, is this construction process more than a year long?
Oh, yes.
It is. So you'd be bringing in fill for-
Two to three.
Two, over two or three years?
The construction of the road, and then of course, the construction of each of the homes.
Right, now I'm just thinking about the 1,500 trucks for the fill.
The road.
That's probably the first year of construction, right?
No, no, I don't think so. I mean, Paul, what do you?
No, that, that fill is going to be over time, it's for the road, it's also for the lots.
Right.
And it's for the septic system.
Right.
So those 1,500 truckloads are spread over probably a year and a half to two years, maybe two and a half.
Really?
Depending on how long it takes the houses.
Wow.
So when you spread it out, it isn't that many. I mean, there's some days when it'll be concentrated, like if you're bringing the sand in for the septic system, that'll start and keep going, but that'll probably be brought in in a matter of two or three days.
And actually, that'll be done in the summer, so it won't affect the school.
The other thing is, and I think is really important, you know, Harlot Street is small. I think you either go all the way down Gannett Road and up Harlot, or you go down Henry Turner Bailey Road, bang a right at the lights, down Harlot. Please, under no circumstances use either Booth Hill or Manlot. They're too narrow, they're too everything, okay? Can you make a note of that?
And most of those trucks, from what I know of the companies that, where they bring the fill from, it's south of here, it'd come up 3A or 123.
Yeah, but once they get off-
Once they get on 3A.
I think what they're saying is Gannett, right, Gannett to Harlot, not-
Yeah.
Not the back roads.
Not Booth Hill or Manlot.
They probably come down Henry Turner Bailey Road because of the radius for the trains and everything, it'd be easier.
We're happy to-
We can put that in there.
We stipulate that for them.
Thank you.
Okay. When you drive by my house.
Hmm?
I'm sorry. Don't beep when you drive by my house.
There you go.
I've heard that before.
Bill will be the monitor.
Yes.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Ben.
Okay, so I just, I don't know if this is traditionally part of the traffic review, but I was just curious if you had any indication of kind of pedestrian usage of the sidewalk area in front, particularly during kind of pickup-drop-off time for the school, and traditionally, what would kind of, would there be anything to indicate, like pedestrian crossing, or anything to improve pedestrian safety if that was a concern?
In terms of crossing An- Vinyl, or-
Crossing the sidewalk from the subdivision road.
I think from the standpoint of the sidewalk itself, you're going to want to make sure it's sidewalk on both sides?
No, this is just a sidewalk on this side, no.
But there's going to be another one on the other side?
No.
There's a crosswalk here.
So there wouldn't be a crossing?
Well, I think there wouldn't be a crossing in the public way, but I think that the question is about the entrance on the private, on the private street, so, same side of the road.
What's the main path, is it on the other side?
Same side of the road, east-west.
Right, because when I went to Hattler School, I walked this out, rode my bike up the sidewalk.
So there should be a crosswalk across the road to get to that sidewalk.
I know, that's a lot of kids from, that come down from, the neighborhoods up there go that way, so I was-
So let me see if I understand this. You've agreed to put in a sidewalk as you face the subdivision to the right, but not to fix the sidewalk to the left.
No.
Why?
In front of, in front of the property for the length of the frontage.
Six hundred, six hundred feet.
The whole length of the property.
So would that be-
Wait a minute.
So that's going to be a sidewalk, both sides?
Both sides.
Both sides.
Both sides. This is one side of the street, both sides.
Okay.
That's right.
All right.
Here to here.
The 3D shows it.
All right, that's not what-
That's where the existing sidewalk is now.
Right, right, and there's, there's no reason why there can't be a painted crosswalk.
If you want a painted crosswalk, well-
Put in a painted crosswalk.
There has to be wheelchair ramps on either side, ADA compliant wheelchair ramps, and then it's up to you whether the town wants the crosswalk.
I think those were in the drawings, right?
But you need to have wheelchair ramps, if there's crossings on either side, if there's sidewalk on either side, you need the wheelchair ramps.
Right.
Absolutely. The crosswalk is, it's optional, that's up to the town, but you need a wheelchair.
Those bumpy things.
Yep.
Yeah, the tactile strips, the tactile panels, those are required.
Yeah, I saw detail in the drawings for that.
It's required per ADA.
Unless, unless it's countrywide, which is what I'm starting to say.
Unless it's what?
Nothing. Not at my house on countrywide.
Well, they're there, it's just a telephone pole right in the middle of it.
Are you saying you have a sidewalk, or don't?
I do now, which is great, but the cut-ins don't have, not all of them have the pads that we're discussing right now for the ADA.
Oh, really?
And there were also telephone poles in the middle of-
Yeah, I mean, it's too narrow to get-
You can't avoid that.
Stop the terrorists.
Better than what was there before, though.
Which was nothing.
An improvement.
Yeah. Okay, more questions on traffic?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you for your presence as well.
Have a safe trip home.
Yeah. Watch the traffic.
So if you'd like, is Paul can give you kind of an overview as to what he's done with this plan since the last hearing?
That would be great.
Okay.
That would be great.
What I'll do is, I'm going to use this plan just to show you the location of where we've made some changes, and all those changes are included in the site plans themselves.
Paul, can you, can you just move it a little bit so Patricia can see it, because she can't see anything?
And hopefully, the camera can still pick it up, too.
Yeah, if not, I can.
You're all out of the camera, right? We can see it?
It's more important for the voting numbers.
Yeah, that's great. Can you still see that?
Can you see that?
Can the camera see that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
The Situate Water Department performed the fire flow tests that there were, that we were asked to have done by them, which they did do, and the results were actually very good, and they have that information at their office.
Could you, do you have somebody give us a copy of that?
Yes.
Okay.
We've added trees to the rear, to the rear of the lots in this area here. There's row of trees here, and I'll show them to you later on the landscape plan. The roadway width, the pavement width has been increased to 24 feet, and we're proposing to put vertical granite curbing if the radius is here, and up in here, and the rest of the project would have the Cape Cod burn. I also met with the Deputy Fire Chief, L. Elliott, and they did send a memo back, they prefer not to have the landscape islands and the cul-de-sacs, and they prefer not to have the vertical granite curbing. Reason being that it limits the ability of them to have two vehicles going back and forth past each other with the curbing, plus if there's some vehicles-
Was that DPW, you say, or was that Fire Department?
This is the Fire Department.
Fire Department.
And if there's vehicles here, they can't get up over the curb. He also said that the granite curbing tends to cut the tires on the trucks, which it does do. We've also shown the water main looped, it'll come in one side, come up here, over, come up and back. We've added two fire hydrants at the location that was required by the Fire Department, there's one in this location, and there's one more here. We've also picked the houses up, so the basements will be out of the, so the basements will be above the seasonal high groundwater. Seasonal high groundwater was based upon all the soil testing we did out there, because part of the soil testing was determined by models where the high groundwater was, and we have done that, which led to the re-grading of these lots as well.
Paul, before you go on, you said granite curbs at the entrance, then you said, are there granite curbs at each cul-de-sac?
No.
I wasn't quite clear what you were saying there.
No, the entrance along An- Vinyl Road.
Right, I get that.
That's going to, that's going to be vertical.
Then you pointed to the cul-de-sac, though.
Yeah.
No?
It wasn't-
It's all came out first.
Yeah. On the inside of the project, it's-
This is the only location on site.
That would be an interesting-
What he did say, and pointing to the cul-de-sacs, there'll be no islands in the cul-de-sac.
Okay.
Excuse me, Paul? There will be vertical granite curbing throat stones at the catch basins?
At the catch basins.
At the basins, yeah. That's typical, yeah.
The, this rear property line has been pulled in to pick up more open space. The plan also shows a row of boulders along here, that is the turn for people on these lots, and going into the, toward the wetland.
Row is on the property line, or on the buffer line?
No.
On the buffer line.
They're along the property line?
Right?
Yes.
Is it property line, left line, buffer line?
The orange line or yellow line?
Oh, I'm sorry. It varies depending on where the yards were going to be, let me show you on the plan.
I think the objective is to mark the buffer line, right?
Yeah.
It varies. This is the property line here, it's going to be along the patrol street line, which is about 45 feet in from here. This is a 100-foot buffer, and we put them along the 75-foot buffer line, which means we will be filing with the Conservation Commission. Once, once this project is voted and approved, and we know where everything's going to lie, the plan is to go to the Conservation Commission to clear in here and put lawns in for the backyards, but we estimate it'll be between 75 and 100 feet. We had the application prepared, but we had to withhold it because there were some changes on the plan, but we, we have a RDA application filed, the reason for that is, it's only for grading and clearing between 75 and 100, and 100 feet, and it would only be on these Just to give you an update on the, on the septic system, we're in the process of responding to what we believe were the last set of review comments, which are fairly minor, we have to add two more cleanouts, the outlet pipe on the pump chamber has to come up, I think, four inches, and we have to increase the monoliching area here because of the way the town of Situate interprets the loading rates using the chambers. The DEP has what they approve, but Situate's different for some reason, and that, that's what we're going to accommodate the town with. The overall size of this will not change.
So Paul, you said this is a pumped system?
Pardon?
This is a pumped system?
It's both a gravity system, each lot has its own septic tank.
Yep.
And then the septic tank will flow into a main sewer line in the street, it'll flow down to the pump chamber here, which will pump it over-
Yeah, so nothing flows directly to the leaching field, it goes through the pump chamber first?
Yes.
All right, okay.
This will be pressure dose, so the water's spread out over the entire area. We also changed the open space calculations, it's required to have 30%, we have 36%. What is not included is this leaching area, which is about, it's just over an acre, which will be flat, it'll end up being like a small ball field. And then the open space does not include this area in here for the stormwater basins, this will sit here, this in here, and down in here. If you weren't to, if you were to include the leaching area in the basins, which won't have houses or structures in them, the open space is about 50%, and the other 50% would be dedicated to the houses, the yard areas, and the roads.
So Paul, just hold on, so the, the 36% open space calculation does not include the leaching area even though it's green space?
That's correct.
Okay, and if it were including it, it'd be over 50?
Right, it's not supposed to include that space.
It's not, okay.
If we included just the leaching area, it'd be, it'd be about 40%.
Okay. But the calculation's not supposed to include that.
The calculation is, yeah.
Where's the, is there a, I don't know if this is showing it, but is there an easement for the, the chamber and pump chamber and all that? Where's that?
The pump chamber's down in this area here.
Okay.
And here, and there's a pipe going across the road, and then it'll pump up and pressure dose that system.
All right.
We prepared, normally you want to see easements on the, on the lot plans, what we've asked for a waiver for is to have a separate plan showing just the easement areas, so it's a lot clearer, and it's part of the set.
But there will be easements, though.
If we put all the easements on the lot plans in our scheme, it'll be hard to see it.
Okay.
Oh, the other thing, I just want to point out, these are the, these are some of the drawings that Paul Sheeran submitted to you, you've already seen this, this is the entrance way, designed for the project, then, this is a view, this view here is looking this way. So you can see these trees behind the houses here, that will be installed, a lot of view from these homes here.
So that house right there is the top, kind of right house in that funky lot?
This house here would be-
That one right there, okay.
And this round here is just another blow-up of the entrance, shows the sign. This is the, this is the curb, vertical granite, and then it goes into the Cape Cod burn. This is the sidewalk on An- Vinyl Road.
Could you leave that one up, just for a second, I just wanted, I didn't get-
The second one?
No, the one you got right there. If you can get a chance to look at it. So that's around the cul-de-sac. So that's not, that's not exactly what you've got up there then, right? That's not exactly what you've got up there then, right? Looks like the third house in the cul-de-sac, the driveway's in a different place. I'm just trying to think, you know, sort of evaluate that against what you proposed here.
I think this is the house against here.
Right.
This one here.
Would be the next one over.
That's right.
And then you've got your two long driveways, that you're only seeing the driveways.
I looked at that plant... That picture and thought exactly the same thing. The purpose of it is that there's an area there that's a 30-foot strip of open space, and the question was raised earlier that there was nothing in between the neighborhood that exists and the new homes. Well, the problem is that there really is no... There's not much vegetation in there.
Yeah.
So it wouldn't matter if it was 30 feet, or 50 feet, or 80 feet. It was a field that's open. So we're proposing that in that narrow area so that we create a stream.
I see. So that's not... The one you pointed at, this one in the foreground, is not that one in the corner. It's the next one over.
That is correct.
Okay, all right. See, I had me confused there. All right. And the shrubs, like the row of what looked like arborvitae's or whatever, that's part of your plantings? That's part of your something? That would be the boundary line over there?
Yes, those would be... Yes, that's the boundary line to the back of that lot.
Okay.
We show the symbol for those plantings on our site plan as well, but the landscape plan shows it more detail.
That was the area you were worried about, right?
The landscape plan shows them as eastern white pine.
White pine, okay.
Okay.
And there's a stone wall that runs along the back there as well.
Yes.
Up against the Townsend.
Yes.
Okay.
An existing?
There is an existing stone wall there.
Yeah.
Yep. But my concern is if you're putting in white... Is the white pine gonna be nice and bushy at the bottom and all the way up? Or are you gonna limit up so that then you can see right through it? What type of a screen are you going to install? Because you're almost sort of on top of Townsend. And I'm concerned with all of the fill that you're bringing in, because you stated earlier that you want the basements to be above seasonal high groundwater, correct? So that means at least 10 feet of fill. And then how...
Fill right in, right?
How high up are these houses gonna be?
They're gonna be pretty high.
They're gonna be pretty high.
All right.
Well, in the rear of the lot, the grade drops down.
Yeah, I don't think that three-dimensional drawing really represents that, shows that, right?
My concern is if they're up that high, and you're saying that it drops down, there's a tremendous amount of water that flows off that property onto Townsend.
Well...
It sheets onto Townsend.
They should've done the analysis. That was one of the questions I was gonna ask him on the stormwater.
Right.
What does it look like now versus what is it going to look like, right? And we have the same problem at Blanchard, right?
Right, and we don't want...
Way up there, and they suddenly had these ski slopes.
I know, and we don't want that. Are these walkout basements?
Yeah. What's happening in that area is from the street, the grade comes up to the front of the house, and along the side of the house, it drops down. As the water sheets down that grade towards Townsend, it's picked up by the detention basin out there. It's intercepted, it's mitigated. And then the outlet control structures were redesigned so that they release the water further away from Townsend, and then they go into another level spreader where they sheet flowed on the natural course where they were going to anyway.
Are these walkout basements?
They're not 100 percent walkout.
But the ones in the back would be.
Yeah, I believe that they'd be more... I think more accurately described as a walkup, where it's not at grade. The basement slab is not at grade, but the back of the foundation is not fully filled up against, and this is called a walkup. In other words, when you're in the house and you're looking out the back, you're seeing... When you're in the house and you're looking out the back wall, there'll be a window that's framed in, and then there'll probably be maybe three feet of a concrete wall that would be finished over. So it's not... You're not walking out onto the ground off the slab. You'll have to walk up a few steps when you exit the house.
If you look at this drawing here, right? So the houses look like they're at 40-foot elevation, right?
Yeah.
So somebody staying in the house is gonna see that big drop-off in the back, right? These are all big drop-offs.
Huge.
Right? That's 33. 32, 33 feet. So it's an eight-foot drop-off in a relatively short rock.
The foundation...
Compared to what it is today.
Which is flat.
The foundation... Well, there's a grade there.
No, there's a grade there, but it's not... But it's a grade over hundreds of feet, not over 50.
I mean, we weren't climbing up or downhill when we schlepped that property.
The slabs...
Well, to the end, you could've... You would've stepped... We had to jump down to get it.
Here's the current grade, right? So if you look at it, this is 36 feet.
Mm-hmm.
This is 30 feet, so it's six feet over 200, right?
Yeah.
That's kind of the grade there. But if you look at what they've got there, they obviously have to get flat areas for the houses, so you end up with the same problem we had at Blanchard, right? Is that here's the house.
You have an engineer.
It goes from 40 down to 33, so that's 70 in an area.
Watch them through.
About 40 to 50 feet, right?
And it's only 30 feet between the lot line and the house on Townsend.
So Greg, if you want, Greg can show you.
No, I don't think so.
Well, according to the dimensions here. Yeah, go ahead. That was gonna be one of my questions.
You can see that the run... The grade goes off towards the property line.
And what would you call that slope?
That was probably a five-to-one, four-to-one slope.
So it looks like it's about seven or eight feet in 40? So five-to-one? So what is that, a 20 percent slope?
Yeah, it's something around there. But again, this runoff from the front of the houses, it all goes to the road. It's picked up by the catch basin, and it gets into the basin. The back of these houses all go into the basin. These houses go around here, and there is some sheet flow that goes off into the woods, but it's very small. The watershed is extremely small. So it's less than tributary, significantly less than the tributary that was there in the pre-development condition.
So can you... Do you have before and after numbers?
Yes, they're in the report, and they've been reduced, both peak flows and volumes.
That report's like a mass of numbers and stuff. Can... Is it something you can say, like, over where these houses are before it was, you know, X, Y, Z, and now it's gonna be A, B, C, or...
Yeah, I can. I'd have to take it out of the...
Well, you're gonna have a better chance of getting it out of the report than I am.
I don't even know.
Greg, is your stormwater going to the people on Townsend Road?
Yes, oh, yeah. It has to be, or else we wouldn't... We wouldn't.
Well, that was the question I asked, so...
Shouldn't they be dramatically less?
So what is it now?
I think Steve just wants to see the calculation.
I don't need to see the calculation, I just wanna know what the numbers are. What is it now? What is it gonna be afterwards? Both volume and velocity, right? Because you gotta have both.
It's volume and peak flow. It's not velocity.
Well, peak flow.
I mean, I don't have those numbers off the top of my head, but I can.
So can you go to the stormwater report? Because in it, it has a table of the before and after at the design point.
I think it's right in the first two... I think there's a summary in the first two pages.
Yeah. What I didn't understand is it said at the design point, and I don't know where that is.
It does have a design point on Townsend.
Yeah.
Where is that?
Right in this area going towards Townsend. It's this property line.
And is there only one design point?
No, there's various design points well deciphered. One of the design points is Townsend.
Okay.
And there's a design point down to Anvilano. And a design point, I think, over by the school.
Good. I couldn't decipher any of it. So on... There's a design point two.
Right.
That you've summarized at the very beginning of the report, that said, here's the pre-development and here's the post-development.
Right.
But I have no idea where design point two is and whether that's supposed to be the worst case, or the best case, or in between.
Well, that is along the... Yeah, design point two is along the property line going towards Curtis Townsend's Road. And what I've done is I've analyzed for the... Excuse me. For the design storms, which are the two 10-year storms.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so in the two-year storm, you've got 3.98, almost 4 CFS, going off towards the Abiter's backyard on Townsend.
I get that concept. I get that, all right.
Now, because of the detention basin.
Yep.
And the stormwater, it knocked it down to 2.81, so we're below 3 in the post-development condition, and that's because of the stormwater controls. That's the two-year storm. 10-year storm, we have 8.93, and we knocked that down to 6.07. So from 9, it came down to just about 6. And again, in the 100-year storm, we had 17.64 CFS in the pre, and in the post, it's down to 12.18. So we did a pretty good job of reducing.
Mine says 11.46.
What page are you on?
The first page. Design point two, existing northerly Abiter's peak discharge rates.
This was...
They have a...
This report was revised on September 11.
Oh, maybe I don't have it.
You might even have a newer report.
November 29, mine says.
Yours is newer.
Oh, okay.
And that was the... We did some tweaks. That was a result of Merrill's comments, and I was able to get it down and improve that number a little bit better. But you can see, you know, this was a critical area. We knew that it was gonna be a critical area, so I... In my analysis, I incorporated the effect of these Abiters on Town Street into the analysis so that I could say...
So can I ask you a question about that then? Just so I understand this? So you say the design point's over on Townsend, right? So I think of a design point as a point on a map, right?
Right.
And my question is across the border. Is the design point that you've picked like the maximum, or... And everybody else will have even less than that? Or did you evaluate the whole border in terms of flow, basically?
I...
Trying to understand what design point means to us.
Yeah, I evaluated the whole border.
Yeah.
As a flow. So in other words, you can imagine the property line from about here down.
Yep.
To where the wetland is. Going across that line.
Yep.
There's some total, in this case, on the two-year storm, would be 2.81 CFS. But that's the total across the line.
That's the average velocity across the line?
No, it's the total. It's 2.81 CFS is being discharged across that line.
And how long is the line?
Oh, I would say, oh, several hundred feet.
So that's what you're calling design point?
Right.
Is that full border?
Right.
And it's not a single point somewhere?
No, it isn't.
Okay.
So in other words, if you took somebody's backyard, which is significantly less, there's even less runoff going across that line. But the key thing in this analysis is the pre and the post.
I get that. I get that, yeah.
It's have you improved the situation?
Yeah, I was trying to understand what this meant in terms of a design point, and I would assume...
That's correct.
And we'll let you speak to it, too.
His summation, Peter Bellmore from Merrill Engineers, I think Greg's summation was inaccurate.
Okay.
And based on my recollection, that design point two is Townsend.
Okay.
I forget specifically where the other design points are, but I think there were at least two more, maybe three. And you do... You look at basically where it's going now, and so you can compare it to under the post-development condition, when this whole build-out, what goes closely.
Right. So in this case, what it's saying is the velocities, the peak flows, will be lower after the development as opposed to before.
Correct.
But that if you go to the 100-year storm, the actual volume is gonna be the same.
I think it's actually less. I don't have the table.
It says 2.04 before and after.
Okay, so the total volume.
The total volume will be the same. It just won't be flowing as fast, basically.
And the first number, the CFS, is actually rate. It's not a velocity. It's cubic feet per second.
Yeah.
So I mean, it's not like it's going from here to the desk in a certain period of time. It's the amount of water, cubic feet.
I get that.
Truckloads of water. So it's not really considered a velocity.
Okay. Sorry about that.
No, I'm just... Just so there's no confusion.
I'm imagining you're standing there, and you have, you know, 11.46 cubic feet per second, or whatever it is.
It must be the pants.
Blowing past you, right? You're blowing by. Okay. And so, design point two, is that the worst case? Everything else is...
I think that's the most critical design point. There are two other design points that we chose.
Were they in here?
Yeah, yes, they are on either side of the road up at Anvilano Road.
But you only did one summary table for design point two?
There is one summary table for design point two, and then we've got a summary table for design point one, and on the next page, we've got the summary tables for design point three.
Oh, I don't have that. All I have is... I have... There's only one table in this report.
Only because there's been no change to the others?
There's only one table in this report.
You guys have different reports, right?
Right.
Yeah.
I guess. But Steve should be newer. His was November. Yeah, this says November on it.
I think on the lot submittal, it was only the... They only looked at the bath basin.
Oh, that's...
Design point two because that was the area.
Yes, that's correct.
Oh, you're right. This says post-development, design point two.
Yeah.
So the others are in the earlier submittals?
Right.
They haven't been revised.
I thought this is a complete resubmittal of the same thing. Okay. That explains it.
And I just wanted to clarify also that several times you've used the word "property line," but not to be confused with "lot line," right? Because like what we're looking at here in the lower drawing, as you were saying, the drop-off is pretty dramatic, but then where it stops the drop-off, there's still 30 feet from the lot line to the property line. Am I correct in that?
You're 100 percent correct.
Yeah, it's this line here, right?
That's what I had said.
Is that the property line right there?
I don't know if that's the property.
No?
Paul, point out the lot line and the property line.
This is the lot line.
Yeah.
Right here.
Uh-huh.
This is the lot line. The property line is back here.
Here, yeah, it's not showing.
Hold it. The lot line's right here.
It's cut off there. But you can see it up.
Well, I think on math drawing, it's on... I'm looking at drainage and grading plan.
That's what we're... We're just looking at layout.
Yes, it is this one, I think, right?
How many feet from the lot line, from lot seven?
This is the lot line here.
To Townsend?
Property line of Townsend. 30 feet. Thirty feet.
That's what I thought, that's what I said. Thirty feet.
So this one right here is the property line, right here, right? This line?
Thirty feet.
That's the property line, right? This line right here. Right? Here's the lot line. Are these the lot lines?
This is the sheeting lines here.
Drainage and grading plan. So is this the property?
You guys are just looking at different sheets of the plan set.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get oriented here. Is that it?
This is the lot line coming across here.
Right, that's the lot line? That's the lot line coming across there?
There's a lot line there.
So that must be the property line, right?
Yeah, it should be the property line.
Okay.
Maybe you could put up Sheet 8 on the board, because I think Sheet 8 shows, the picture is clearer than maybe we would have put on the floor.
Yeah, that's what we're looking at here.
Close to 60 feet.
The area behind the lot line but in front of the property line is dedicated open space area.
Right. And that area, there aren't any sort of contours on this? Well, yes, there are, I don't know.
Sort of, going sideways.
So, when it grades down, what happens across that 50 feet to the property line?
The buffer, in the buffer area there? Greg, can you give it-
Does it just meet the existing grade at that point?
There's a basin.
Or are you going to grade that out, or what?
Do you understand the question?
I'm sorry.
So, you know, everything comes down this hill, right?
Right.
And then there's, I think what we're talking about is this distance between the toe of the hill and the property line.
Right.
What does that grading look like?
The grading is contained on the lot. That buffer strip in back there that's vegetated, there'll be no grading in there, that'll-
There'll be no change.
Yeah.
And the amount of water that enters that area will be reduced.
Right. And you did your Design Point 2 at the property line?
Yeah, at the site's property line, yes. Not at the lot line, at the property line. So I accounted for everything.
Okay. So this looks like much bigger than this one. If you look at the scale-
Can I pick that one up? Stay late in the dollar short, guys.
Thirty feet.
Before we be on it.
Yes. Let's say it's about 30 feet. No. But they're not grading in there, right?
One of the things I'm concerned about, we don't end up with another branch of fire when they're clearing or doing whatever, they just leave all these mounds of stuff, and we end up with flooding.
Yeah, I think they have to hold the clearance line.
Absolutely, no question.
Yes, you're right.
So you guys talking about it?
The whole grading plan is up there now, so that you can clearly try and see what's going on for the whole development.
This is the lot line coming down here, the solid line. It comes over here and over. From here in is the lot 8. This is the stormwater basin here. What happens is, this is the property line. This would be the tree line on the lots, on the homes on Townsend Road. What happens is, you can see the grade, the grades are such that they're flowing back toward the basin here. There's also a catch basin here that's sending water into the basin. And these lots here are graded back toward this area here, that 30-foot strip, which will direct the water into here. Then it goes into, this is, there's an outfall here, there's a forage pipe here. There's a level spreader in this area here, so when the water comes out here, if this were to build up, it'd simply come over the level spreader and continue down in the existing path that it follows now. But what this does is it basically shuts the water off going to the people on Townsend Road. Right now, some of the water's flowing this way directly up against your stone wall. What this will do is to cut that off and send it into the basin.
It doesn't look like that's what it does. If you look at the grades, they're, the top of the berm's 31, right? Those grades are 29, 30, 30, 29. No, in the untouched, ungraded zone, right?
In here.
Yeah, those are lower elevations, so they're not going to get back into that basin. I'm assuming you looked at that when you did this.
Right, well-
I mean, they flow there now. They flow across to the Townsend anyway, right?
Like I said earlier, that just flows straight across, but the tributary area has been reduced.
Reduced a lot, yeah.
Yeah.
I get it, I get it. But that area, in the buffer zone that's untouched, the grades are low enough, they can't get back into the berm.
No, they'll keep going.
Yeah.
My biggest concern, we don't want an instant replay of a previous subdivision that shall remain anonymous.
Mm-hmm.
Because when these lots were cleared, people who did the lots left piles of stuff in where the drainage was supposed to be, and it all backed up, and it all panted, and it ended up on the other side of the stone wall and in people's basements. That can't happen here.
No.
It can't. That buffer that you have, that 30 feet, which I don't really think is enough, but there it is, that has to remain absolutely, positively pristine. Can't be touched, other than plant some shrubs. That's it.
Well, that's the intention.
I know, but, you know, somebody has to be watching.
Maybe during construction, I mean, you're going to have some type of permanent ornamentation for that buffer, for the open space, but maybe during construction-
You have to grow trees, aren't you?
-there simply has to be like an orange snow fence or something like that to delineate the whole area.
Right. There's no-
So that there's no disturbance.
And no mistakes.
Right. One of the things that we're delineating, that buffer zone, is with a silt sock, so that nobody is going to cross that sedimentation barrier. There are other, a lot of this, a lot of your concerns were outlined in what we call the SWIP, the SWIP Plan. And I've got not just a perimeter sedimentation barrier, but I've also got sedimentation barriers around stockpiled areas. I've got demonstrated, particularly in this area, is temporary sedimentation basins. And that's with the use of a silt sock as well. And the advantage of that is you're moving less earth around in that area. They trap sediment, they can be easily maintained or replaced as necessary, you can double them up if you had to. There's also stockpiling areas that I have put along the site that are designated suitable material for fill, so that if you're going to stockpile an area, the stockpiling area occurs in the places where the fills are greatest on the site, so that you're not moving things around, you can use that as the site. There's also a designated stockpile for unsuitable materials, you know, your stumps, any boulders, any organic matters, litter and kind of-
You know, I think that's great, right? You need that, and I think that's excellent, right? I think what Ann's speaking to is, we had that kind of stuff in this other place, too. And a contractor came in, or a couple of contractors came in, and they started regrading an area that caused a pond-
Right.
-that caused a pond in the neighbor's basement.
Right.
And not just one neighbor, but like four of them.
So they didn't follow the plan?
So, the good news-
Right, but, you know, and the conversation was, oh, well, that was, the contractor was building the house on the lot, right? What we're trying to tell you here is, we're not going to be looking to that contractor who's building the house on the lot. We're looking to you, to manage it until the whole site's done, right?
Of course, yeah.
And what we want to try to avoid is having people end up in that situation.
If I see that coming, I'm going to be yelling, because I don't want to be before you in that mess anymore than we want to.
Well, I just don't see me before you in that mess. We don't want to have people have to pump out their basements, right?
Absolutely.
So, the good news in this situation is our builder's actually here tonight, and he's listening to this, and that might not have been the situation in your previous scenario.
You're probably right there.
Mr. Sharon and-
Mr. Gillespie.
Mr. Gillespie. The two of you will develop all of these houses.
That's correct. There are actually three people involved.
There's a third builder, but we'll do it, it's my brother, so we'll do it, we'll coordinate.
You can twist the desk.
We're not going to, believe me, we're not going to create that kind of situation.
Oh, we can't do that again. It took over a year to get it resolved.
Yeah.
No, we can't, we don't have that kind of time. And neither do the neighbors.
Well, it's not even getting it resolved. It's, it costed real money and real heartache to people, right?
Yep.
Who, you know, our job is to try to avoid any impacts to the neighbors.
I mean, these houses are going to be elevated, there's no question about that. They're going to be high, correct? And-
Can I just do that one second, Ann? You mentioned about walkout basements. The elevation in the foundations is only 1 to 2 feet. So it isn't going from a typical cellar to a walkout situation. What Greg was alluding to earlier was that what it may end up on some of the houses, if there's enough room, is a knee wall with some windows. And that's if we've got enough height. And with a 2-foot difference in the elevation, it's probably not going to happen very often.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I mean, I just hope that when you're in the living room of these houses in the back, you're not looking into the bedrooms of Townsend.
No, no, no.
Okay.
1 to 2 feet is what they raised to eliminate the drains.
Maybe go back to Ann's other point, maybe just for some area along the back, in addition to the silt sock, there could be a snow fence-
Yeah.
-so that it would guarantee the safety of that 30-foot buffer while, during construction. I think that would be-
I don't know that it would guarantee it, but it would certainly flag it for people, right? It's visible, yeah.
They couldn't cost all that much. And look at the time it will save.
Okay. While we're talking about stormwater, Peter, do you have any other input on stormwater?
As far as the stormwater, we were satisfied with the analysis. We did have a few things in our latest letter, but none of them related to stormwater per se.
Okay.
One of them does relate to stormwater.
What's that?
One of them does relate to stormwater. The underdrain in the roadway goes to Anne Vinal Road, and the DI spoke with the DPW this afternoon, and the DPW says they've not been contacted, and they normally do not allow it.
Can you point where that is?
Well, it's not a storm drain, but it is, it's an underdrain for the sanitary sewer. This is common engineering practice.
Right, tell me there's a-
For sanitary sewers, they have an underdrain system underneath that. And one of the reasons why you would want to have an underdrain under a system is to minimize IA, which is infiltration, because if you don't have that, your capacity at your plant just goes down. We're not on a plant. Who knows what's going to happen in the future? But in addition, you don't want excessive groundwater getting into your pump station and then into your leaching field. Because it's not, leaching fields aren't designed for the groundwater, they're only designed for the sanitary flows. So what we've done, we've always had this on the plan, was in the trench bed for the pipe, there's a perforated, it's just a 2-inch pipe.
It's like a French drain kind of thing?
Yeah. And even the pipe bedding under a sewer acts as a trench drain commonly. It's better to have a 2-inch pipe just to drain it. And, I mean, the-
But show me where it's connecting to town infrastructure.
Okay, it's connecting right into, there's an existing structure right here, and this is the line. It'll, it's underneath the sewer, this is the sewer line. Sewer line comes right like this.
And it's-
This is the last manhole, and it goes into the pump station for the underdrain. And you're lining the center line, and conveniently, there's a catch basin right there that it can go in. Now, the-
But that's a town catch basin.
Right. The flow that's coming out of this, I mean, it's a fraction of a CFS, like 0.2 CFS. It's a, you know, it has nothing to do with stormwater when it rains.
I think the point is, you need to close the loop with the DPW on that, make sure it's okay, right? We're not going to make that decision. I think we're going to lean on the DPW to make that decision.
All right.
So, I think that was the only thing, you should just close the loop with them on that. What if, if you couldn't do that, what would you do with it?
Well, if I couldn't do that-
Would you have to create a leaching field yourself? Or a-
Eliminate it.
No, I wouldn't. What I would, I would daylight it onto an undisturbed stretch of land, and just let it flow.
In the subdivision?
Right. But I, I mean, we're talking-
You don't have to convince me, you have to convince the DPW.
You know, 0.2 CFS, I mean, and that's, in the summer, it probably won't even fly. I mean, we've, when we did our test pits in the summer, we weren't even hitting groundwater.
Okay, well, enough said, you just need to check with them, yeah. Anything else on stormwater? While we've got you here, Peter, do you have a list of other items?
Yeah, as I said, we did submit a letter today based on the plans we had received. I think we're supposed to have to give this letter today.
No.
As I said, most of the items have been satisfied being addressed from our perspective, at least based on what I had at the time. The outstanding items were a landscape plan-
Yep.
-signed by a registered landscape architect. The question, I don't think it's been resolved, but the applicant is showing iron pipe at the lot corners, and I believe the requirement is they be bounded, property bounds. And I also suggested, recommended, that the open space have been demarcated, the bounds, property bounds, so that there's no question when the open space begins and ends and so on. I think the planning board needs to consider the waiver requests, because the final plan is going to be reflective of that-
Yeah.
-so that there's no confusion there. One of the items, outstanding items, was approval from the DPW. I had asked for some additional information as far as the responsibility of the drainage system. My understanding is it's going to be a homeowners association, but other than that, I don't think any additional information's been submitted.
You mean for the stormwater system?
Yes.
Or for the sewer system?
For the stormwater.
Stormwater, yeah.
On the erosion control plan, which was part of the SWIP, we had commented on it, we've got revised plans. There was one section just down gradient of the leaching field that, there was no erosion control barrier there. I think it may have been an oversight, but I do think it's important. There's a lot of fill going in there, about 6 or 8 feet, I think it's about 6 feet.
This is the one on the east side?
Yeah, it's actually, excuse me. The erosion control doesn't show on this plan, but it's right here. Erosion control came here, there was erosion control here, but there wasn't any right here, and as I said, it may have been an oversight. But I do believe it's important to have it there.
Okay.
That's the hall road for the sand coming in?
Either way, I mean, with the amount of fill that's here, somehow, this area needs to be protected, I think. I mean, there's a way around it, but it should be shown. The only other thing I have, and it really, there's no requirement in the rules and regulations regarding grades on driveways, but some of the driveways for, on a small cul-de-sac, what I consider very steep-
Yes.
-in the range of 20%, you know, 10 to almost 20%. That's very, very uncomfortable, if not problematic. I think they should be what they're advised.
And what would you say sort of normal design is? I mean, what I've seen is like 10%?
10% is-
Max, right?
We, sometimes, I've seen a 12, and that's okay. Two things you have to consider, obviously, is getting in and out of the car. Anything over about a 5% grade, the doors want to close by themselves, so it's difficult to get out.
Right.
And in. So those are really my-
So you need transition areas for people? Like if it's up by the garage, then it needs to be much flatter up there, right?
Yeah, there are leveling areas, but, you know, vehicles 18, 15 to 18 feet long, some of the leveling areas, one in particular that I'm thinking of is about 8 feet long. So there is a curve, they've provided a curve so that it wouldn't water it out, but again, I think it's awfully steep, and I think it could create issues down the road. That's really my outstanding point.
Great. Thank you. Do you guys want to try to address, I mean, the waivers, we'll discuss in a minute. How about the grade?
Yeah, I'll let Paul talk to them, but just, my thought on the grade issue is that when you look at the provisions of the flexible, one of, specifically the provisions, is to try to maintain the existing grades, and the whole concept is to keep the existing natural look-
Yeah, but you're not doing it.
And typography, but I get that, so, yeah.
You're building way up, so.
Yeah.
You've gone way past that.
Yeah.
Right? I think that's the reason you have some of these slopes, is you've. I think it was to get out of the groundwater, right?
Right.
The easiest fix on that, Stephen, is to just drop the garage down.
And a retaining wall.
With a retaining wall, and to whatever level makes sense so that the driveway is.
Yeah. So like number 12, it's almost 20%, right? Where, what's number 12 there?
It's the corner line.
I think they're the ones in the cul-de-sac, right? Am I wrong?
In the small cul-de-sac, yeah.
Close off the small cul-de-sac.
Could you stipulate a maximum driveway grade in order, and then we can adjust accordingly?
I think, you know, it seems like 10% or so is probably where you want to be. I mean, 19, 20% feels like, besides the problem of doors closing and all that kind of stuff, you also have ice, snow issues, right? And you don't, I don't know if there're sidewalks here, right, but you want to be able to have somebody stop before they cross a sidewalk or end up in the roadway, too. So where was 12? I'm sorry?
12 is the one, right above the first cul-de-sac?
Yeah.
It's on the corner.
Yeah.
Okay. So 12 was 20%.
If you look at your cut and fill plan.
Oh, yeah, okay. Thank you, Richard. I'm so blind, I can't see any of this stuff. Yeah, so that had a 20% slope. Number 13 had a 12% slope. 14 was a little, just 10, so that one's probably okay. And then 15 had a 15, almost 16% slope, and 16 had a 16 and a half percent slope. So where's that?
Well, this is.
Yeah, that's right around that cul-de-sac, then.
And this is 12. 12 was the steepest one.
Yeah.
13 wasn't so bad. But the issue with 15 is it's a short run.
Mm-hmm.
You know, these driveways that have short runs, they're the most difficult, because, you know, they're short, and 13 was longer, so, and the same thing with 14, so they weren't as bad, but what we can do.
I think the short run makes it even worse, though, right? Because there's no place to get flat, you know, kind of transition to get a nice, long, flat level for people to get out of cars, yeah?
Yeah, exactly. What we can do, we can drop this garage slab down. We could even, we can even, I don't know how you feel about this, Scotty, but we could flop this house so that the garage is on this side.
Yeah.
Because the grade of the road comes up. So that, you're going to pick up some grade that way, and you can, you can still drop the garage accordingly to, you know, to make it work if you had to.
Well, I'll leave you guys to sort of figure it out. I think if you're in that, it feels to me like if you're in that 10% range, then you're probably okay.
In the past, in these situations, too, is when we do drop the garages.
Yeah.
We then end up adding a retaining wall along this part of the property.
Yeah.
And that reduces the grade. You'll end up with some steps up to your motherland area and to your front door.
I understand it's probably not preferred, because people don't want to step down into the garage, probably.
Yeah, but we do, we do it pretty often.
Yeah.
We run into that situation. We don't, we, if, this was pointed out now, but.
I can do it.
On-site, we would have made that adjustment.
Okay.
Waivers?
Yeah, let's discuss waivers.
I wish I could read this.
That's why I was going to my drawings, because my electronic, because I can blow those up.
You can't read these?
What page is that on?
Page. I got there, yeah, right here.
Want you? That's Karen's report.
Page four, sheet four.
Sheet four.
I just don't want to walk up.
Sheet three.
Sheet three.
I can't read this. I need a meg.
I'll blow mine up.
Okay. Yes, I can.
Got one more? So what I'd suggest here is, let's just walk through them, get all the questions on the table. If there are ones that we have more questions than others, let's just walk through them, and then we'll address them, maybe as a whole group, or we'll address a subgroup, and then deal with, you know, kind of any open issues. So I'm walking through your list here on sheet three, which has margin requirements on drawings. You know, I don't have, I don't have a dog in that hut.
That's not a problem.
Okay, as long as you're okay with it.
I'm okay with it.
Show all street lot lines and easements on cover sheet locusts plan. And I think that's where you suggested you were going to show a dedicated easement drawing? Okay. Anybody have any issues with that? Bounds shall be set along each new, set along each new lot line and change direction. So normally, these would be concrete bounds, right?
Concrete bounds.
And what you're asking for is steel?
Not everywhere.
No, what I'm asking for is, in this plan, where you see a circle, there's a small square in it, which is a concrete bound, which we normally set along the change in direction along the layout of the roadway, but when we get to a lot line, what we typically put is a two-foot piece of reinforcing steel with a yellow cap on it. We set it flush, so the lawn mowers don't get it, and people really can't pick them up too easily. And they can fire a metal detector very easily, but the roadway would be bounded with a concrete bounds. There's a total of 27, and on the, on the reinforcing rods, there's 15. So you'd have a total of 42 markers along this whole roadway, which I've never seen before. Theoretically, if you had two here and two down here, and they're set right, and no one touches them, then you could lay out the road, you could do the perimeter, you could do everything with just those four, but typically, the town has a set, the concrete bounds that change in directions, and I would do that at a minimum, and you really don't need a rebar and caps. Sometimes these get knocked out in landscaping, but if you had to put these in, then, you know, the surveyors would just come off of these monuments. Having 27 monuments there is a surveyor's dream.
Well, we're trying to make it easy on the surveyors.
It's cheaper for the landlord, I mean, the homeowner, too, if you have a survey.
And does that address the marking of the open space?
No, that's separate, that's their, that's a separate issue that has to be addressed separately.
Okay.
This is just for the.
This is just a waiver on the requirements? Well, I'd like to hear your opinion on it.
I think, I think the monuments and the iron pipes make sense.
Sufficient?
Yeah. Generally speaking, I think a survey is going to tie into a concrete bound anyway, so oftentimes, you don't even want to rely on the lot corner bounds if there is one.
Okay.
So I think the iron pipes make sense.
Any other questions or comments on that?
But along with some of the concrete bounds.
Well, the concrete bounds that they'll change the direction.
Once you're proposing the 27 or whatever you're going to do is concrete bounds, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. You know, why don't we, why don't we vote on those first three, and we'll just vote on them as we go, instead of coming all the way back again? Want to do that?
Why don't you go down to the fourth, and because that ties into the same easement type and easement plan.
Okay. Show all easements on, okay, so that'll be a separate easement plan?
Yeah.
All right? I think we already agreed with that in item two there, right?
Right.
Okay.
So do you want a motion on the first four?
Motion on the first four, yeah.
All right. Move, do we, just move the first four waivers?
As discussed.
As discussed.
Want to second that?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Those to bed. How about close traverse survey? We're not going to close our survey?
No, we did close it, we submitted those calls.
Okay. So you don't need a waiver?
No.
Okay. So cross that one off the list. Show easements. How many of these waivers do we need about an easement drawing? Oh, electrical easements shall be provided when National Grid designs the duct bank and transformer layouts. But it's all going to be on a separate easement drawing, right?
National Grid will have their own easements, they'll tell us where they want them. I mean, the easements that we do are the ones that are all relative to the infrastructure. Then once you endorse the plans, then they can send them on to National Grid, and they'll come up with their easement plan. They'll record this.
So will you put National Grid's easements on the easement plan? Is that what you would end up doing? Or is there a separate plan?
No, usually you don't. National Grid has their own easement plan. I don't know if they record them or not, but.
Well, we need them recorded, right?
I'm not sure. Some of them are recorded, sometimes they aren't. They've got their own right-of-way department that does those easement plans. What they'll do is ask this for the AutoCAD file, and they come up with their easement plan showing where the underground electric lines are going. On our plans, we do provide for the conduits under the sidewalk, and typically, that's where they put them, but when they put a transformer in, they, you know, this is big green boxes, they'll typically put them on a lot line, and they'll typically take an easement, maybe 10 foot by 10 foot, but we don't know which lot line they're going to put them on.
But they'll give you a drawing with all these on them?
We could show them on the as-built plans.
Okay, let's make sure that happens.
We would have them on that plan, as well as the monuments.
Let's make them, make sure they get on the as-built plans. Does that sound good?
Yep.
Do you have a motion?
Move to show easements to make sure that the electrical easements are shown on the as-built plans.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Show location of existing large trees over 12-inch caliper. Can't read that. Show existing and proposed tree line limits, as all trees within the area of disturbance will be planted as part of landscaping operations.
There weren't too many trees there that were worth talking about.
So this is a requirement to show existing trees, but all these existing trees are coming out.
Right, and they have located several, a couple of additional trees that we asked for them to be located, because they were large trees, and so some of them are going to be saved.
Oh, so are they on the landscaping plan? Do you know?
I think they're on one of the existing plants.
Okay.
But there, some of them, when you go for trees down below the soil absorption system, they're on the existing drive.
Okay.
So some of those.
So they're already shown?
So they're already shown, but a couple of big ones are highlighted.
Okay. So do you need a waiver on this at all? Why would you need a waiver?
This is something you normally grant, because they don't show every tree over 12 inches.
Okay.
So you normally grant it.
Do we have a motion?
Move to grant the waiver on the 12-caliper.
12-inch caliper, yeah.
Trees.
Second?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Landscape plan to be stamped by a registered landscape architect. Why can't we have one stamped by a registered landscape architect?
When we, when we put the list together, we had come up with our own landscape plan, but since that time, the owners have gone out and engaged, I'm looking for a dossier to prepare the landscape plans that you see here.
Is he a registered landscape architect?
Yes.
So you don't need this waiver then?
No, he's not. He's a landscape designer with a degree in landscaping.
So you don't need this waiver?
Well, you do.
No, he's not an architect. He's not a landscape architect.
He's a landscape designer.
So I have a comment about this. In the subdivision, subdivision rules and regs, section 6.3.3, section six, that prescribes the rule that you need to have a landscape architect have a plan. In kind of the little preamble of the different points of what's supposed to be on the plan, it says, "The landscape architect should be included in the design process to assure integration of landscaping with other features of the subdivision, and to promote the preservation and enhancement of the natural landscape." I'm, whether someone's an architect or a designer, it's not really, if they're, if they're doing the things they're supposed to be doing, then that, it's just a stamp to me. I do, however, feel that that part of the, of the regs is something that really should be thought about. I understand that you guys already came in with a definitive plan, it's kind of set up, but there's a lot of aspects of this design that, if kind of the landscape aspect of it, and also, you know, touching on some of the purposes of the flexible open space district, like preserving natural features and kind of cultural aspects of the land that's being developed, I think that could, you know, better outcomes can be had if that kind of section 6.3.3.6 is followed. So personally, I'm all right waiving the architecture part of it, but I do think that if this designer's who you want to work with, there needs to be, you know, some, some things that really need to be looked at, and you have to be okay with maybe letting them, you know, do a little bit more, taking suggestions from the board, whatever it may be, just to make sure that we're following kind of what the intent of that, that, you know, rule is. And that's, that's all I have to say about that.
Anybody have any comments? I have one. And I don't think a stamp is just a stamp, right? I think a registered landscape architect earned that right to be a professional, and I think we should recognize that. And I'm not particularly in favor of waiving that particular requirement. I do believe there is, there is value in having this stamped by a professional. We have professionals who do our engineering review, and, you know, I think, you know, the flip side of that could be, we could hire a registered landscape architect, but we'll need you to, to give us the money to do it. But I'm just not in favor of waiving this requirement. And I don't know where anybody else stands.
I could add to that. I mean, this is a gentleman, he's the same person that's done 3D drawings or sketches, and we've used him for quite a long time. We used him on Evangeline Drive, we've used him in a number of other situations, and he's a very good landscape designer.
I don't doubt that, right? You know, I think we set up the requirement for a reason, and I, and I put value in a, you know, a professional landscape architect review and sign-off.
So you'd like us to have the landscape plan redrawn by a landscape architect?
Well, if he can stamp it, he doesn't have to redraw it, as long as he's happy with it.
Well, I've asked him if he has someone to stamp it, and he doesn't, so.
Well, I think the point is not just the stamp, I think the point is.
It's the review.
Is what Ben said, is the landscape architect tends to have, offer a sensitivity toward the land that would be helpful to a project like this. I mean, I guess I would be okay if it didn't, if it wasn't stamped, I mean, being a landscape architect myself, but I would like to know that somebody's going to look at the grading and integrate, make sure the grading is integrated as best into the surrounding environment that it can be at this point in the design. I mean, I would say that this, that this is something that the board should not be looking to weigh in the future. I mean, because the landscape architect, being involved in the process from the beginning, does bring sensitivity toward the land. And I think that's the purpose of a flexible open space design, that you want the sensitivity toward the land.
Any other opinions?
I would agree with that.
Okay. Move not to waive registered landscape architect.
Do we need to vote? All those in favor of not waiving? Aye.
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 Show trees having 12, we already did that one, right?
Yeah.
We don't need to vote on that twice, do we?
No.
We already approved that one. Show the cultivated variety of the proposed plantings on the landscape plan. Is that coming with the landscape plan?
No, we probably withdraw that because cultivated variety of proposed plantings. If they're, if they're going to have a landscape plan prepared, the variety would be on the landscape plan.
As approved by the...
These drawings here, some of the drawings I did see that the architect did, did have the variety, the different types of species.
They did have the varieties, types and sizes on the landscape plan.
This appears to be, want to wait until they talk to the conservation commission is what it looks like.
They don't need this waiver.
Okay.
It was already on the landscape plan.
Okay. Maximum length of dead-end road. Dead-end road limit is 600 feet, right? Length of the dead-end road here is 770 feet to achieve the benefits of the flexible open space design. So, talk to me about that.
Well, if we had a 600-foot road with 16 lots, you wouldn't have any open space. We'd be using only square foot of that land. The 770-foot road, you effectively have half that site left as open space that wouldn't be used by humans. There are structures to be dedicated to the field for the leaching area. And the basins on this side are going to be wooded and treed.
I'm sorry, if we had a 600-foot road, there wouldn't be any open space?
No, that, that was the conventional subdivision plan where the lots were bigger.
So I have a question. At the last meeting, I believe it was the last meeting, Anna talked about potentially taking the entire road and kind of basically scrunching it up, making the lots a little bit smaller. Was that looked at as conceivable or not? I know that was something that was discussed in the last meeting, which would shorten the road and also increase the buffer of the 30 feet between the lot line and the property line. Was that looked at as not feasible? Or did that, I'm just curious. I know that was something that was said at the last meeting.
Well, we tried to, to fix that with the landscape plan for the back area in terms of the 30-foot. It wouldn't matter if that was 50 or 75 or 80 feet wide. If there is no vegetation there, you're just going to look right across it. So that's why we're screening the back of that, of the... And quite frankly, we've redrawn these plans several times and really didn't want to do it again.
Okay.
I think that the board has offered, has done this waiver on practically every project.
Right, we have.
You probably legally don't have, if you don't have roadway.
I, I wouldn't agree with that.
Well, we have done...
The board has its discretion.
This is also true.
I'm not saying that, that I think, I personally would say that we would apply it here, but, you know, I don't think we're legally bound to approve a waiver like that.
Regardless, do you want a motion?
Well, I want to make sure there's, if there's any other questions or comments.
It's too late.
Public safety is already agreed.
Right.
They have no problem with 770.
Okay.
And I think if you pushed it down, all you're going to do is you're going to compact the front end of it and the back end's going to be wide open. You're not going to gain anything by doing that.
Well, I'm open to a motion.
Move to waive the length of the driveway, our roadway from 600 to 770 feet.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Second that, just a discussion or question, 770 feet is the right number, right?
Right.
You're not going to come back later and say it needs to be 790 or anything like that?
No, no more than 770.
Right?
Everything, everything in design is on that?
I think that's a good modification, no more than 770 feet.
771 would be fine.
Move as amended to 700, no more than 770 feet.
Second?
Well, hold on, hold on, let's just...
I just want to make sure, check the schedule.
Side point number one.
Concrete setting.
You said the end of the cul-de-sac?
The end of the cul-de-sac.
I think you mentioned the center of the cul-de-sac. What's the station of the center?
What's, what's the measurement to, Karen? The 600-foot measurements to where? Is it to the center of the cul-de-sac?
I think it's to the center of the cul-de-sac.
All right, I just want, this just needs to match, right?
Mm-hmm.
Doing the same length, same measurement points, just a longer length.
It's to be measured along the center line from the edge of the layout of the through road from which they are entered to the center of the cul-de-sac or the midpoint of the turnaround.
Okay.
For dead-end street, slanting course.
Okay. Are you still checking?
You're starting, you're starting at the property line.
Why don't we say it on this road?
Well, we could revisit it next time if, you know, give them, you know...
Well, if you guys want, I'm just, I was just saying, we're going to lock it in, lock it down, so we might as well have the right number.
Who's got a ruler?
Well, it must be on the plan.
Well, they calculated it for the, the waiver. Shouldn't that be correct?
We can only vote.
Oh.
Why don't we, why don't we revisit this one waiver at the next area?
Put this on hold then.
There it is. It says, if the dead-end street can't be longer than 600 feet, measure it along the...
We already, we already got that.
We already know that, Paul.
We're waiting for you guys to figure out what the right number is, right? So we'll put that on hold. We'll revisit that next time.
Yeah.
So roadway cross-section as depicted in the detailed sheet. So what's the difference? What, what are we actually asking for a waiver on there?
Guys?
On the cross-section?
We're not asking this way.
Moved on already.
We don't need this way.
Don't need it?
Yeah, because I say, you made it, you increased the width.
It's 24 feet, right?
Yes, you need a, you need a some type of waiver here.
Why?
Because the dimensions of a half roadway width do not match the dimensions in the table of dimensions. There's a 42-feet right-of-way width, 24-foot roadway, 3-foot Cape Cod...
Oh, this is the issue where the regulation doesn't add up?
This is the issue that things don't add up. So we have, you have to decide what is going to be the best cross-section. And technically, they need a waiver because the numbers don't add up right.
But we're okay with the cross-section as presented?
What they, what they have proposed is a 12-foot part of a roadway. They've proposed a 1-foot burn.
Could you tell me where that detail is on this set of drawings, so we're looking at it?
So one of the last sheets.
One of the last sheets.
Okay. Let's get this right. So where is the cross-section? What sheet are we on? What sheet is this? Oh, here it is. Sheet 14, right? This is it right here. Standard pavement, section detail. Is that it? I'm only calling about what's on these drawings.
No, no, this is your, the new drawing here. I mean, this is...
No, this is my drawing right here.
This is from the drawing that you have in the setup. On the R-section and the rest, they call for a 1 and 1/2-foot burn. On 4-foot grass strip, 5-foot sidewalk.
So where, where is the, where, I want to ask Peter here. Let me ask Peter. What are the issues that you think need to change here?
Well, I, I think they're asking, one of them is the burn. They're asking for 12-inch burn versus 18-inch burn.
So you think it needs to be an 18-inch burn?
No, I think 12 is better.
12 is okay?
No. What? No, I think 18.
A lot of the pavers, paving companies don't carry...
They don't match up.
They don't match up?
When you come back and you...
I'm just saying from a construction point here, I think you get a better product.
At 18, at 12?
At 12, okay.
Yeah, I think that's what they're showing there. These dimensions should add up to 21, so it's 12, 13. You're saying 4-foot grass strip?
They're saying 2 and 1/2, right?
What's required is a foot and a half, 4 feet and 5 feet.
12, 13, 15 and 1/2, right? Plus 5. Right, that's 20 and 1/2, 20 and 1/2, 21.
Yeah, so that would be... Yeah.
That's 42.
So as drawn, it works?
As drawn, it works.
Let me see. 2 and 1/2, 5, 1/2, 1, yeah, this is from the plan. Is that, do it, Ben?
This is what's required. 1 and 2 and 1/2 feet, but half of 42 is 21. The cross-section's off by a foot and a half.
Well, I think the bottom line is this is...
Bottom line, this is what we're going to approve, and I just want to make sure you think it's, it works.
This is what, this works and this is what's on the...
Right. And that includes the whole design, like the top code and all that stuff, right?
Yes.
I mean, I'm looking at the whole thing, okay. Okay. So as shown on sheet, what did I say that was?
14.
14. Okay. All right, let's get back to that now. Now I had to lose my place. Okay, here we go.
We're down here somewhere.
Yeah. Just had to, I started looking for stuff. I lost my place. Okay, so we're at the section 7, we're at 7.2.3. And the waiver is proposal to use the roadway cross-section as depicted in the detailed sheet on sheet 14, right? Of the definitive flexible open space face, uh, plans.
Do we want to say the date, like June 14th?
Or does it matter?
No.
Okay.
It's going to be corrected, but it's being corrected for the private plans.
Okay, okay. But what we're saying is, whatever's on the plan right now, that's it, right? So they can't change it on the next iteration, right? Okay? So I think you might be right there, that we ought to reference this particular plan, right?
Which is June 14th, 27th, 18th.
Why don't we stamp that? What revision is it?
This is actually, what is this?
There would be a red.
Actually, I'll spell it out. I'll spell it out so I'll say what the cross-section is.
11:26.
I'll spell it out, say what the cross-section is, so you're talking...
That's a better way to do it.
What's the latest revision?
X-berm, X-grass strip.
Okay.
Let's spell it out.
Okay.
No, the 7.
So, do we have a motion for what she said?
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Granite curving throughout the subdivision, granite curbing in entrances, Cape Cod berms for remainder of roadway to preserve the intended quaintness and harmony of the surrounding area. All right, that was good.
That was excellent. Who wrote that? God, we're getting a little crazy here.
Except for the store one.
Any issues?
No. No, we've already discussed it.
And Ben?
No.
Move to grant the waiver on the granite curving just for the front entrance. Cape Cod berms for the remainder roadway to preserve...
The intended quaintness and harmony of the surrounding areas.
Of the surrounding area.
Oh, my. Just as a general statement, we should at some point in the future...
Well, it's been moved. Do we have a second?
No, 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 no. I'm just saying, we should, for the future, make sure that we have a recommendation because in this particular case, there was, the DPW says one thing, the fire department says something else. So just didn't, it just seems like we should...
Well, we do. We have recommendations for both of them, right? So it's our decision.
Okay.
So it's been moved?
Yes.
Has it been seconded?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Last one, maintenance required, 10% of all construction costs. Provide 1 and 1/2% of all construction costs equally... $9,420 to be rounded.
This is a, this is a maintenance guarantee. It's a maintenance guarantee providing a surety equal to that percentage for total value of work within the subdivision, so... I'm not sure why it was requested, but that's, it goes towards a guarantee for surety, I believe.
Well, are you trying to waive the surety?
I don't know.
This is in addition to the surety.
It says...
Well, it's a requirement, right?
Maintenance guarantee is in addition to the surety that you...
Well, that's just the surety for maintenance, right? Effectively.
You hold surety for the construction of the road.
I get that, but this is to assure maintenance, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So why would we need to waive that? Or are we changing the value of it or something?
Yeah, he's changing the value of it from 10% to 1 and 1/2%.
And do we believe that $9,000 would cover it?
$10,000.
Do we believe that would cover it? I have no way of knowing. Do you have any sense on that, Peter?
I honestly don't. It seems like a low number, but I don't...
Yeah, it seems low to me, too.
I don't know what goes into it, so I'm just kind of...
Maybe we should put this one on hold with the other one and try to get a number on that?
It's really just maintenance, probably during construction, but we can put it on hold to get a number.
It's a performer.
What is it for?
Is it just during construction?
I think you'd have to know what the definition of that is.
Yeah. I don't know enough about it.
By the town for the maintenance of streets and municipal services for 18 months after completion of construction installation or until streets are accepted by the town. That's not going to happen.
Okay, so we've got two items on hold. We have the length of the road, right? You, you are going to get us a definitive number, right? And then we are going to try to evaluate this last one as...
Is that, is that what it was?
Yeah. So that's the second one we have on hold. All the others we've made decisions on.
Great, thank you very much.
Um, I see we're getting to the witching hour here.
I'll do it.
Let me see what else I had on my list, just to see if there's anything else we needed to address. You said you're talking, the board, you're still working with the Board of Health on the sanitary system?
That, that's correct.
Okay. Grading, stormwater.
There's one, one issue.
I have a couple of questions. That stormwater association was submitted today.
Okay.
In the past, we've had it reviewed by town council. Do you want it reviewed? Or the applicant is maybe suggesting that it has to be reviewed?
This is a form that, I've been involved in a half a dozen of these flexibles. Every, I'm not aware of everyone being reviewed, but the form has been reviewed and re-reviewed by multiple people, probably town councils from time to time. And this document is the culmination of all of those reviews over a period of time. I just think it's...
Is there another one that's been approved that's identical, roughly identical to this?
Yeah, well, Attorney Mike Hayes just, just did this. Mike, Mike's now in our firm and he used the most recent flexible form that, that was approved previously. I can get you, I can get you where that came from. I just, I just think that, I just think it's kind of wasteful. I mean, the whole purpose, almost the entire document is how the trust is set up and what the powers of the trustees are or not.
Right.
The point is, is that the key here is to make sure that the maintenance responsibilities for the infrastructure are in place and give the town the proper easements to come in and evaluate and deal with it if ever there's an issue. And then secondly, to make sure that the open space is, is there in perpetuity. And those are the two main issues and reasons why you would have this. I don't, I don't, I mean, I, I don't think that there's a necessity for legal counsel in order to ensure that because if Karen's got an issue with some of the language with respect to maybe two paragraphs, we can work it out. It's not a big deal.
What do you think? I mean, we're, we're sort of relying on you as town council now.
I gave them some issues today.
Okay.
So, I think the more important...
Let's discuss it sort of offline, all right?
I think the more...
We'll, we'll put that on hold for now.
The more important issue is the ownership of the open space. Technically, in the past, it's always been, you know, beaded to the town. But I think the town is not taking most of this open space anymore. I think...
I guess we're here just to go through the process. There was a request submitted. The review engineer, Pat Brennan-
Do you identify yourselves?
I'm sorry, John Barry, manager of Blanchard Farm LLC, 18 Grasshopper Lane. So, the request was submitted. The review engineer has been out to the site, has put together a checklist of items. We, I think, were requesting all but fourteen thousand seven hundred plus or minus, but there was, I guess, a checklist missing for the DPW on the ASBIL plan, which has been submitted, but it was submitted today. So, I don't know that it had been reviewed by the review engineer, but my understanding is, there's a value. We have about sixty-seven thousand dollars in the account, and we're looking for a release. And again, I don't have the numbers right in front of me. Karen, what was the amount that was proposed?
Well, I'm recommending that the board keeps nineteen thousand five hundred dollars in the account. So, basically, with the amount of sixty-seven three point eight plus interest, they will be getting back forty-eight thousand seven hundred thirteen dollars and ninety-eight cents with nineteen thousand five hundred remaining in the account.
And will this-
Based on the punch list, that includes something for the ASBIL. They did resubmit the ASBIL at four o'clock today, but it has not been-
And would this holdback include sort of soft costs if we had to pursue this ourselves?
It includes the-
Meaning project management costs and that kind of stuff?
I mean, includes the hard cost plus contingency, plus five years of contingency at two percent a year.
Okay.
Which is the standard way that they've been calculating.
Yeah, I think the last time we released the surety, one of the things we added as a line item was a cost that we would have to incur in order to pursue it ourselves as opposed to have these gentlemen finish, right? That there's a soft cost associated with it as well. Do you think this contingency would cover that? Or is it intended to cover the variability in the cost of the line items?
It's intended to cover the cost of the line items.
Yeah. What do you all think?
We have the matrix that shows what they are. I'm not sure that-
Yeah, I have. I have this one here.
The actual cost would really be applicable to most of them.
Loam and seed, stone wall at entrance, streetlights, stop sign, stop line. The ASBIL's probably not. Adjust DHM, DMH two, what's that?
There's a manual that's covered by pageants, and they had to bring that up too.
That's been done.
So, I mean, the applicant's requesting, you said fourteen thousand?
Yeah.
No, the original-
Oh, that was it. I was just wondering what the difference was.
Forty-eight something.
No, no, I'm sorry.
I want nineteen thousand five hundred to remain in the account based on the third estimate by the consulting engineer. I did not give you guys the second estimate of that consulting engineer, which was around fourteen thousand, because the original ASBILs did not meet the DPW checklist.
Okay, so, I, yeah, that was my question really, is where is the difference? So, that answers it for me.
But the ASBILs are flat rate, flat, what, six grand?
Yep.
Right, but the ASBIL was submitted today.
Well, it's forty-five hundred is holdback, right?
Yeah.
And there's twenty-six hundred for the loam and seed behind the Cape Cod berms. There's thirty-five hundred for the stone wall at the entrance. There's almost forty-six hundred for the streetlights, four hundred for the stop line, and then the forty-five hundred for the ASBILs.
All the work on the streetlights were done as well, other than the actual streetlight being stood up.
All the infrastructure's in-
The pedestals are in, the meter, the wiring, so.
They've been backed up.
This is based on Pat Brennan's field visit, and so-
Right, that's all we're gonna go on, right?
Right.
Yeah. So, I guess I could, you know, given that we think a lot of this has happened, I could live with the contingency being there for us to, I mean, if we had to build a stone wall, we'd have to go out, put an RFP out or something, and have somebody build a stone wall, right? Somebody'd have to do that. So, I just think in the future, we ought to have a line item in all of these to cover planning board soft costs, you know, to actually take care of it. But I would be okay with the nineteen five.
Let's move the nineteen five.
Right. Do you have a motion, Madam?
I have.
Good.
All right, that is great. Move to accept Blanchard Farm LLC's request to reduce the amount of surety being held by the planning board for completion of the Blanchard Farm Estate subdivision from sixty-seven thousand three hundred and eighty dollars and eighty cents plus interest to nineteen thousand five hundred dollars remaining in the account, as Amory Engineers has prepared a punch list, and the amount listed in the punch list is consistent with the funds proposed to remain in the account.
My second?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, folks.
Everyone have a nice holiday.
You too.
Coming up fast.
Long time no see. Everything well?
Everything's fine.
County?
Yeah.
You have bills to pay?
Yep.
I move to approve the requisition of one thousand one hundred and seventy dollars to Merrill Corporation for Engineering Peer Review for eight Bayberry Road stormwater permit, for four thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifteen cents to Horsley Witten Group Incorporated for Engineering Peer Review for Seaside at Situate Toll Brothers, for three hundred fifty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents to Amory Engineers PC for construction inspections for six oh two First Parish Road, for one thousand four hundred sixty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents to Amory Engineers PC for construction inspections for Blanchard Farm Lane, and for one hundred and twenty-five dollars to Ockers for a typewriter maintenance contract.
Typewriter maintenance?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's probably the only person in the state who does typewriter maintenance, sorry.
Can take us to the very, a lot of departments who is checking.
That's crazy. All right, minutes? We don't have any minutes, right? Liaison reports?
I was at the design review committee meeting on Tuesday, but that will, they're going to be bulletizing their points for recommendations to Seaside at Situate.
Recommendations to us.
Recommendations to us. And we both, Karen and I, stressed that it'd be great, or really imperative, to have one of the design review committee members presenting that here on the 21st. I think it's the 21st, right?
That would be great if somebody would do that.
I believe Hal's gonna be here for that.
Okay. Cool. Anything else?
Conservation is moving right along, sending out all kinds of demands for money. They want to be paid for their people who are not in the alliance.
Who does?
Conservation agent.
When you say sending bills out for money, what do you mean?
Well, if you don't, so if you have still not applied for-
Oh, enforcement orders, okay.
Yeah. And she is red hot to get that.
All right.
And didn't you guys go to zoning?
Yeah, that's the big one is, I went, and Patty was there too. We went to the ZBA meeting, was it last Thursday, for Haringbrink Meadow reopening of the special permit. So, there's some substantial changes to what their initial permit was allowed. For instance, it's going from three buildings to two buildings. There's some layout changes. Even though there's now two buildings, it's actually a square footage increase, and all the, majority of the parking is actually going to go underground under the buildings. There's a lot of concerns-
I heard underwater.
Yeah, regarding-
Water wings.
Since the permit, the flood maps have been updated. There's a lot of concerns about kind of those issues.
Isn't the number of units going from like sixty to forty or something?
There's a reduction in the number of units, yeah.
And by the way, you know, the garage underwater is one thing, but if they're taking town infrastructure, that's gonna get flooded as well. I would be opposed to doing that like water lines, right? We don't want to expose those to flooding five or six times a year, right, or whatever it is. So, I think we should think more than just flooding their garage, right?
Yeah.
I think they're definitely noting that it's more than just flooding the garage, because you have, when the garage is flooded, you have to move the cars. The cars are supposed to be moved on top of the soil absorption system.
Yeah.
And so, there's other issues too, water ship protection district, a whole bunch of them.
That was in the letter that Brad wrote.
Is it a onsite septic system?
Yes.
Single system, right?
It's actually, but it's a subsurface, they have a subsurface discharge from DEP, so it's a little bit, the engineering's a little bit different, I think. They're gonna be ejecting it.
But all of the piping would ultimately be below groundwater level?
Um-
Or it'd at least be flooded? I'd worry about that system having infiltration in it.
They got a groundwater discharge permit from DEP.
When?
Uh, it was recently renewed.
Oui. That's too bad.
Last month, I believe.
Seems like we're putting a lot of stuff in harm's way.
Yeah, with a building in a puddle.
Why would it be such a puddle?
One thing, one thing I think that's interesting, obviously, this project, you know, has, there's a lot of concerns with it, but more just on a conceptual level, is that a lot of the chatter around town, you know, now that this is public, is, oh, God, 40Bs, oh, God, 40Bs. And I think that in our housing production plan, there, you know, there's a certain amount of steps we could take to try to increase the affordable housing and maybe hit a certain threshold, so we don't have to fall into that trap every time, and maybe just, just keep, we can, as a planning board, keep that in mind in the future, is how do we incentivize and push forward this housing production plan to kind of get these affordables and kind of reduce the risk of kind of the bad 40Bs that might come.
Well, right now, we need four hundred and fifty units, I figured out, for what it is, to meet our ten percent.
Right now, we're at four hundred and five percent.
Yeah.
I'm all for, you know, helping increase the affordable housing, but I'm not for putting infrastructure and facilities in places that are gonna create greater problems.
Absolutely. Putting people-
I mean, you know, 'cause all of our emergency responders are gonna have to respond to those places, right? It just seems like we should be smart about that, but.
We need to go to the ZBA comment parents.
Well, to what extent has the ZBA asked for our input? Have they officially asked, or?
We provided that one comment letter under Brad's name, and as more detailed information is done, I mean, if you wanna provide a comment letter from the planning board, you're welcome to provide a comment letter. I'll get some, I'll get plans, but I don't know if, don't know how detailed the plans are. I mean, I-
I would, I would be in favor of doing that.
Brad and I both sat down and wrote that letter, so, you know, we included-
No, it was a good letter.
We included stuff about the water resource protection district, which has, you know, changed since that project was first approved.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, you know, you need to be at the table in order to provide the input, so, I mean, I'd be willing to look at whatever they're filing and suggest, you know, comments for the planning board, because it seems like it has to get down to the level that we look at it, doesn't it?
Not really, no. No, it's 40B, right?
It's a 40B that is concerning amount of zoning can be made.
I'm sorry?
If they don't have to meet all the zoning requirements.
I know they don't have to, right? It's not about have to. It's about saying, this is what we think about what you're doing, right?
Right.
And giving our opinion. Nobody may listen.
Their operation is, we propose to do it this way. They don't have to have the technical drawings. It just showed that it works.
Right. But I still think we'll face issues, you know, water issues, right, for infrastructure. How are they gonna, they're gonna drill their own well?
Saltwater.
Proportable water?
I doubt it. They're probably tying to town water.
We don't have it. What says we have the water? I mean, we should make sure those issues get on the table, and as you suggest, we may not have any control over them. Doesn't mean we shouldn't voice our opinion about it.
I'll see what DPW, wow.
I'd just like to see whatever they filed.
See what more information they can get for you.
Don't you think? Do you guys think we've taken on something we shouldn't?
You know what? If we don't, no one will.
Right.
We have to.
Well, we're responsible for planning, right?
Yes, and this is, you know, as someone once said, somebody will come along with enough money and enough time, and they'll build at low tide, and this is what we've got.
Right.
And they're gonna do it, and this has been kicking around now for over ten years.
Right, and we've run into these issues where zoning board appeals made decisions, and we get involved after the fact, right? So, we might as, we've been saying it, so we might as well sort of-
Step up.
Put our money where our mouth is.
Okay. Let's see, CPC met Wednesday, Monday night, and they had the school, the fields, they have to replace the-
Soccer?
No, not the soccer, the football field. And that was appropriated in last year's capital plan for four hundred forty-five thousand dollars. But at the same time, they want to replace the track.
It was backwards.
It was put in backwards. It's too, it's not, it's not wide enough. It runs-
You mean, you don't go on a loop, you go outwards?
No. It's supposed to start over here, and instead, it starts here. It's not wide enough, and it runs off. In other words, it's here, and the back of it is two feet lower. So, you could never have-
A regulation race?
Any, you know, if any break time, no records or anything like that. Plus, it's, needs to be repaired. They don't do anything. There were divots. It's a safety issue, whether or not they continue to use it. And as someone asked, well, who was in charge of this? Silence. So, it was lack of maintenance over years. But now, the school department is becoming involved. Recreation is involved. Field study is involved. But, you know, two million bucks is a lot of money.
Is that what they're asking for from CPC?
It could be, if you deduct the four hundred forty-five-
Seven eight six or something?
One point six. And then they-
That's a big number, yeah.
Yeah. And we're not gonna go forward any further until we get, they finished, they have other phases that they want to bring into all of this, using land. And apparently, the past superintendent felt that it wasn't the school department's responsibility to deal with fields, even though their kids are on the field. So, that was that. And then there were a couple of other things that are basically, you know, a map and a this and a that. Then EDC is having a workshop in Green Bush on the 10th to talk about the Drew property, to talk about any number of different things, and also that piece of zoning. We're gonna let people know about that with the Driftway Medical is, to bring that online with the village district. So, that's-
Is that open to everyone?
You can come.
Okay.
Of course you can. No, it's, it's-
But that piece, we're trying to get on the next town meeting, right?
Yes, yes. So, we're going to have, we'll discuss that, to let the stakeholders know what's coming. And I saw the plans, and here's another issue of ZBA, and it was in the paper today, The Mariner, it says, Rob Proctor is going forward with two pieces of property on Old Country Way to get rid of these two old houses and put in contractors' garages and just cover the entire property. And it's within the hundred and fifty foot, there's a stream that runs right through it. But it's one of those things, you wonder, well, why are they going for relief through ZBA when they should be coming here?
What kind of relief are they looking for? Zoning relief?
They're looking for zoning relief.
Alternate use kind of thing?
No, for-
Nonconforming.
Because they're on water shit?
There's part of the requirements, they're existing, pre-existing nonconforming, and there's some of the impervious requirements for the water resource protection.
I can't hear you. There's some-
Impervious requirements?
Yeah.
They exceed the impervious coverage for the water resource protection district.
So, and they're asking for a waiver on it?
They're asking for a waiver.
The whole-
Why would we do that?
The whole lot is covered.
Right now?
No, it will be, if they get what they want. With all of these garages, and they're talking about pervious, didn't it say-
Pervious pavement.
Pavement.
It's supposed to be a ZBA agenda on the 21st, but because the attorney can't be in two places at once, the attorney will be the planning board.
Yeah.
It's going to be continued to January.
Eighteenth?
Yes.
Yes, so.
So, if they-
I can have the plan, I can have the application.
If they got a waiver there, do they still need site plan review?
Yes, they absolutely do.
Yeah.
But they should do that first.
Well, you would think so.
Yeah. And because my big fear is, they'll get a building permit, and then it's gonna be duck soup.
Well, they did type in, they did type in-
They can't get a building.
It has happened in the past.
I know, but it's not supposed to happen, right?
There is going to be a meeting next week, I believe, with the applicant regarding the project, so I'll be sitting in on that meeting. I can scan, I can have the application scanned and sent to you, but if you would like.
I'll look at it. It's okay.
Since we were talking about the affordability, I know there was the issue of Riverway. Is there, has that progressed any, as far as, I know the applicant came back and said it wasn't feasible, and would the board be looking, are willing to look at alternatives? Is there any proposals on the table?
No, he has not responded back to the letter of November 20th.
Yeah, we invited him to come in and talk to us about it.
Right, I know that, but I thought that there was, they came back with, would we be open to all-
Come here and talk to us.
Okay.
I think that basically what we need to do now is, he has not responded to a letter on November 27th. I think I need to send him another letter saying, please come to the planning board meeting and copy town comps on it.
Yeah. Yeah, I just, if he wants to propose an alternate solution, I don't want to do it by letter. I want him to come in and say, this is what we want to do and why and all that, right? I think it's been years since we've talked about this one, right?
Oh, yes.
Two, three?
More.
The last time we had contact with him was three years ago.
Three years ago.
That's why we sent the letter. And so, we can, I'll send him another letter requesting his presence and copy town comps on it.
I mean, if he wants to propose some other kinds of solutions, he's more than welcome to come and propose it, right? But I think we want to talk to him.
We weren't careful last meeting, we discussed it, and he basically wanted to put the land to the town for park, so that he could get his private, the money that's in the fund. And it really doesn't meet the requirements for town, don't need town land.
Yeah.
And so, just doesn't meet those requirements. So, I sent him a letter, basically, that said, you know, the board would be willing to discuss some options with you, you know, please suggest something, and, you know. And I was asking to suggest something and be at ex board meeting.
Did there be any reason that that land in some form or shape would be useful to the town? How much land is it?
Is it enough for mixed use building?
Yeah, it's pretty, there's already just-
Like a tenth of an acre or something?
Yeah, but it's, they've used it for-
Boat storage.
Gathering point for the marina.
Yeah.
And it's also, I think they've got easements on it to get into the cemetery.
Oh, yeah, 'cause they got the little cemetery right there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but the parcel's not very large itself.
But it's right on the road, right?
It's part of the larger parcel, so it-
But it's right on the road?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's right on the road.
Right, so, in terms of, it might be interesting to ask the EDC who's doing the visioning, right, is there something that could go in there that would make sense? And maybe it is mixed use, right, but maybe there's some other pocket park or something that could make sense too. I don't know. I mean, I wouldn't take it as is. I would say, okay, make it a park, and then we might take it, right? I mean, it'd be something to look at anyway. And I don't know what the options really are. I mean, I think the bargain we made was, it was gonna be a mixed use.
That was part of the conditions.
Right.
It's part of the conditions, especially.
Yep.
So, then, the only other new information I have for you is that hopefully, the local action application for Fifty Country Way is going to be given to us next week, so that the chief executive officer of the town signs it, and it actually gets committed to DHCD, so that the, those four units in Fifty Country Way will start on the process-
Of being affordable?
Being affordable.
Uh-huh.
Once it goes through DHCD, they hold the lottery, and then the units actually can't be put on subsidized housing inventory until after they're occupied. I have to do a new uniform after they're occupied.
Now, are these condos or apartments?
Apartments, right.
Apartments.
Then all of those apart-
No, they cannot-
They can't?
It was part of the, it's part of the mixed use special permit that requires X percent of affordable housing, just like what John Drew is proposing. X number of those will be affordable housing, and will go in the same procedure for the local action.
Now-
So, it, there's a, there's a formula for defining what affordable is, right?
Yes.
And what does that, what does that equate to for these units?
I, I don't know.
I saw something recently that I think the median income in Situate was like ninety thousand or something like that.
Oh, really?
Well, it was, it was like, basically, if you were earning like seventy thousand, that was affordable, is what I saw.
They have the whole formula, and it's gonna be up to the monitoring agent to have all that calculated, and-
Yeah. Yeah, I was just curious what it was.
I haven't read the whole document, because we haven't got the final version for the town to sign.
We're still a pretty long way away from occupancy permits and stuff, right?
In my opinion, yes. Not even-
They haven't, they haven't finished the second building, right?
They haven't finished either.
They haven't started the third building, right?
Right.
No.
So.
I think that there's, we have, we're on different wavelengths for what we think occupancy is.
Well, I sure would hate to get two buildings built, not the third one.
This one, you put conditions in, that can't happen.
Right.
But there's some things that aren't done, that are required to be done prior to any occupancy.
Right.
And that's, the affordable units have to be done, the emergency access to the ABTA right of way has to be done. That hasn't even been started.
So, they got a ways to go.
It's pervious pavement, so that can't be done until spring.
And also to the sewer.
We have water and sewer issues, and Mr. Gent's attorney will be going to board selectmen on Tuesday night to ask for some relief in the-
What are the issues? I thought they already had that all worked out, so it hasn't been?
Yes, it is. It's all, it's all worked out in the memo. The planning board conditioned that the water and sewer had to be done per DPW requirement, and any modifications for water, et cetera, were at the owner's cost. DPW, after the fact, came back and wrote a letter saying, this is the hookup fee, and then you have to, they did analysis, the pipe a little bit further down near McDonald Terrace, and that's undersized, so it has to be upgraded before they can tie it into sewer. That work has not been done, and they are trying to get some relief from the selectmen on that.
Meaning they want the rest of the town to pay for it?
Or take it out of the benefit money.
Well, that's, that's the rest of the ratepayers paying for it, right?
So, they're going to the board selectmen Tuesday night. So, Kevin Cafferty will be there, and I'll be there to defend our planning board decision, which would be that, you know, US condition, that the water and sewer had to be done per DPW standards.
Seems like a reasonable condition.
Seems like a really reasonable condition.
Wow, okay.
Despite all the little issues, I think it's coming out nice. As far as aesthetically, it looks nice, I think. So, my opinion.
They moved right along, though.
Yeah, but once they, you can, they had all the units up by the, was it the Sunoco station?
Yeah.
And then they moved them all and assembled them.
Yeah.
On Sunday.
But I was there on a Thursday, and when, Thursday morning, April 5, going down the golf course, came back at two, they had started working then, and the next morning, they had basically the second building- had basically the second building, what's the second building, hold on?
Yeah, they go up pretty quick, but the binder's down, um, the binder down, is it last week, the week before, before the weather turned, the day that it was turning, they were there early, and the binder got down, so, um, that actually will help protect the site for the winter.
Any sense when they're gonna start the third building?
No, I think they're-
They don't have foundations in, right?
No, I think your sequence in construction, they approved as part of the project, so that they could complete building Z and B prior to starting building C. I mean, building, the two buildings in the back, building A is the front building, they can be completed prior to the first bill, the front building.
I thought we put some conditions on it.
You did, and you have timeframe that it has to be built within, et cetera.